Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. We have a motion moved by councillor Wells, seconded by deputy mayor Bray. The council waives the rules of procedure with regards to public notice of this meeting, 4.02a, and the addition of any agenda items for consideration with regard to items related to COVID-19, 4.05b. And, Dina, would you just speak to the need for council to pass this motion?
Thank you, your worship. Procedure or bylaw rule 4.02a is regarding public notice of calling a meeting, which requires normally 48 hours' notice. And 4.05b is during special meetings, no items are allowed to be added to the agenda. So for this case in the emergency meeting, we have decided to waive those rules in order to have this meeting and be able to carry on council business.
Thank you. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Disclosure of pecuniary interest, if at some point throughout the meeting you find that you do, please declare it at that time. Other matters for council decisions and discussion, we have a number of them. We will start off with an update from our deputy fire chief regarding the Simcoe-Muskoka District Health Unit on COVID-19 virus.
Yes, thank you for having me. I'm going to start with just a general update on the virus and the status of it, and then provide you with an update from the federal, provincial, and our municipal level as well. Our communications officer also does have some recent information from press releases that occurred today, so he'll fill in us that right afterwards. So for the general update, COVID-19, the information continues to update minute by minute, hour by hour. There are now 162 countries and territories that have been affected by this virus. A total of 182,000 positive cases have been confirmed, 7,100 deaths worldwide, and 79,000 have been deemed to be recovered. In Canada, there has been a drastic jump in the number today, with almost 100 cases being added. So I just looked at an update just two minutes ago, and we sit at 417 positive cases. They've just announced the addition of three additional deaths, so we're now at four deaths in Canada and 11 recovered. In Ontario, we're at approximately 177 cases with 1,316 cases under investigation. And in Simcoe-Muskoka, we still are sitting at three cases confirmed with many more under investigation. At the federal level, they are assessing the impacts on the economy, the supply chain, and social wellbeing. Travel restrictions have been implemented, our communications office will address that. One that was from a few days ago is that a 14-day isolation of all individuals that returned to Canada. They're also looking at ways to support the provinces and territories. From our province, they continue to work on the acquisition of personal protective equipment for first responders and hospital staff. I do not have any update of a positive nature on that, to sense that we will have access to more personal protective equipment in the near future. They have opened up 17 assessment centers, which are something I spoke to the last time, where the goal is to keep sick people away from the emergency departments and doctors' offices. There's restricted access to long-term care homes, and they're supporting our local health units. The county of Simcoe provided an update this morning, that they are implementing their pandemic plan and continuity of operations plan with a special focus on paramedic services, social services, and long-term care. Their emergency operation center will be activated as of tomorrow morning. They are having regular meetings and updates with their senior leadership team, as well as their staff. They have canceled public events and programming, and suspended all of their nonessential services. They are encouraging their staff to work from home when possible, and offering flexible work hours to promote social isolation. For Wasaga Beach, our senior staff has been very busy over the last few days, making a number of changes, some of which I'm sure you're aware of. We have completed a review of the municipal services, sorry, municipalities within Simcoe County, and looked at their service delivery levels. You have a sheet in front of you, which outlines for you if there has been program changes, if their various facilities are open or not open, and if they've made any cancellations to council meetings. We have now closed town facilities, except for town hall, public works, and the fire stations. We've distributed three public information bulletins. We produced one staff memo, and had various other additional emails for staff. We've also delivered two staff training sessions this morning, there will be three additional ones later on this week. We've continuously participated in provincial and county teleconference to stay abreast of the information. We've had multiple senior leadership meetings. The Treasury Department has started to track the costs associated with this event. Our human resources department is creating guidelines for us to follow. We've put in place enhanced cleaning practices at all town facilities. And finally, we have a business continuity plan that we're working through with our senior leadership team, and that will be implemented in the near future.
Okay, thank you for that. Before I open it up for questions, I'd like to get through, there's a couple more updates under this section. I also will point out that the chart from Craig regarding facilities and facility closures will be discussed later on in the agenda. So next, we will go to our communications officer, Mike Jennings, with regard to the provincial update.
Thank you, your worship. Throughout the day, we've been monitoring what's been happening at Queen's Park and in Ottawa, and the purpose of this is to just sort of walk you through the things that we know as of now. So Premier Ford held a news conference with senior ministers this morning. As part of that, the province announced that it will introduce new legislation that, if passed, would immediately provide job-protected leave to employees in isolation or quarantine due to COVID-19, or those who need to be away from work to care for children because of school or daycare closures. The proposed legislation would, if passed, provide job protection for employees unable to work for the following reasons: the employee is under medical investigation, supervision, or treatment for COVID-19; the employee is acting in accordance with an order under the Health Protection and Promotion Act; the employee is in isolation or quarantine; the employee is acting in accordance with public health information or direction; the employer directs the employee not to work; the employee needs to provide care to a person for a reason related to COVID-19. Also, it was announced today that the province's budget, which was due later this month, will be a fiscal update, March 25. It will be a one-year outlook. There will not be a lot of details yet about what will be in it, that will be coming still. A full budget will happen later in the year, it is anticipated. Premier Ford said his government is doing all it can. He noted that he has the full confidence in the federal government, and the premier today urged all Ontarians to pull together. Ontario courts are open, but the system is only dealing with urgent in custody matters. And moving to the health front, I wanted to mention that over the weekend, the province announced the expansion of telehealth resources. In an effort to reduce wait time, more nurses are being deployed through telehealth to conduct symptom assessments and referrals, and it's anticipated that additional resources will be rolled out in the days ahead. The government has approved for doctors to provide routine health care by video and telephone. COVID-19 assessment centers are being established, where people can present. One will be at our local hospital, and I believe the CAO will speak to that. The Minister of Health today encouraged people to visit the province's COVID-19 website, and there's a self-assessment tool on there that people can utilize. The province has asked hospitals to ramp down elective surgery, and this is occurring. Another area I wanted to touch on was, the province issued a statement assuring Ontarians that the food system is secure, that happened over the weekend. I'll shift gears a moment and mention that the Ontario Chamber of Commerce has created what it's calling a "business pandemic preparedness checklist." You can find that on their site, and we also have a link on our town website that contains information that may be helpful to the business community. We've set up a town resource page for COVID-19. If you go to wasaga beach dot com, you will see the link that will take you there. It contains all of our information bulletins, as well as links to the health unit, the province, and the federal government's COVID-19 pages. And I want to note that we will be adding additional information to that site in the days ahead, and I encourage the public to visit it. Also, this afternoon, Prime Minister Trudeau held a news conference. He noted that the federal response has been based on science, and that's a point the province has also touched on. The federal government is working closely with provincial healthcare partners, as well as international partners. A key announcement the prime minister made is the closing of the border to anyone who is not a Canadian citizen or a permanent resident. Air crews, diplomats, and US citizens will be still permitted, as well as commercial movements. This is opposite to what the government had said, but the prime minister spoke to that, saying that it is due to the situation's rapidly evolving nature. During the news conference, the prime minister said that it's time for Canadians abroad to return home. He said the federal government is prepared to offer assistance to Canadians in need. Specific details weren't mentioned, but he did note that airlines are to refuse passage to people that are exhibiting symptoms. A lot of details about this are being worked on, and that was mentioned by the prime minister, as well as his ministers who spoke after him. Four Canadian airports are designated to receive returning Canadians, those are Pearson, Montreal, Calgary, and Vancouver. The prime minister noted he's spoken with our G7 partners and provided them an update, and he stressed that measures nationally, and provincially, and locally are meant to save lives. He also noted that things are changing, and people should expect additional announcements, and that these could be made as early as tomorrow. And finally, your worship, he stressed the importance of Canadians at all levels, working together, and that is a theme that the premier spoke to as well.
Thank you, Mike. The next update is from the Collingwood General and Marine, and I will look to our CAO for that, please.
Thank you, worship, members of council. So just before noon and slightly afternoon, I sent out, or the mayor sent out two emails that were sent to her from Nora Holder, the chief executive officer of the hospital, with updates in terms of what the hospital is doing. And this morning, the Collingwood General Marine Hospital put in the following measures: no visitors, exceptions made for compassionate reasons, minors requiring a parent guardian and accessibility support person, all elective surgeries and endoscopies are canceled, all urgent and emergency procedures will continue to be provided via our surgery program. A COVID assessment center is being set up outside the emergency department via a tent, and it's proposed that this be up and running by tomorrow morning. And all employees and physicians returning from travel outside Canada as of March 15, 2020, are to be self-isolated, will not be working at the hospital for 14 days. As well, the hospital will be canceling, as of March 17, 2020, all remaining non-urgent outpatient services and clinics. And as the situation evolves and change is occurring, they will be issuing further media releases. I want to come back to the assessment center. The Ministry of Health designated the acute hospitals across the province to be coordinating the assessment centers, and one of the mandates was that the assessment center be located close to the acute hospital, so they've located the assessment center for our region just outside the emergency department, and people will be screened at the assessment center, and if necessary, will be tested at the assessment center. If they do not have symptoms and they have another issue, then they'll be asked to go into the emergency department. And as the communication officer indicated, this is intended to reduce the burden on the emergency department. There was some discussion about potential assessment center in Wasaga Beach. In the early days, this would be about two weeks ago, officials from the district health unit and our local CHC looked at our OQ room at the Recplex as a possible assessment center. And with the directive that the province look at establishing an assessment center close to the hospital, they've taken the step that they have, and are establishing this heated tent outside of the emergency department. Your worship, that concludes the update on the, from the Collingwood General Marine Hospital.
Okay, thank you for that, and I think it's important to note that these assessment areas are dictated where they go. It's not, you know, we would like to have one in our community for our residents, but it is not something that we get to choose, and they need, they have certain standards and things that need to be followed for that, so. Craig, did you have anything to add on that? Okay. So we do have a motion, before I open it up for questions or comments, that I will need a mover and seconder, that council receive the updates from the Simcoe-Muskoka District Health Unit, federal and provincial governments, and Collingwood General Marine Hospital for information. Can I have a mover, councillor Kinney, and deputy mayor Bray? And I will open it up for questions or comments. Councillor Watson?
Thank you, your worship. To the CAO, could you give some clarification about the assessment center that's coming up? I read about it before I came to the meeting, but it wasn't clear if people can just walk in, and they think they may be sick and they want, they want to test, so are they going to be allowed to drive into the Collingwood and to the assessment center to do it? Because I also saw that they recommended you calling the health unit first, and going through a procedure with them. So just to clarify what you can and can't do with this center?
Councillor, that's, that's an excellent question. I think the intent is to try to, to have people do the self-assessment with respect to whether they're ill or not. They can do that self-assessment using the tool that the communication officer indicated. They can also call telehealth, they can also visit their, their family physician, but as, they also have the option to present themselves at the emergency department. And I think the assessment center is there for those people that choose to go to the emergency department. They will be assessed on the spot even before they come into Collingwood General Marine Hospital, because if they, if they are ill in that, in that regard, then I think the hospital doesn't want anybody else to be potentially affected by the spread of the virus, so they will be assessed, if they present themselves, they'll be assessed at the assessment center prior to entering into the hospital.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification, that's important to know. Just a couple other things I also noticed today, they've talked about dental work, don't go see your dentist, they're talking about only emergency work with dentists now, so I'm sure people will be hearing about any appointments that they may have coming up. And it's interesting, today, a very dear friend of the family who's an 80-year-old retired nurse, was told that they're, the province is trying to recruit some of them to maybe help out, banning the phones with, with the health units and that sort of thing, because the overload, the amount of inquiries that are going to come out, and maybe even to go help out at the assessment center in Collingwood, so it's quite interesting that some of these people that have retired may be put back into action with this pandemic that's there. And it's also going to show the future of health with the telehealth centers, they're going to be very valuable going forward, so that people can actually communicate with someone, but not being in their presence and maybe spreading the disease. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Foster?
Thank you, your worship, and it was mentioned by the CAO. When you're talking, the assessment center being in front of, or in the proximity of the emergency room, but not in it, is absolutely critical, and we, everyone has to remind anyone who's going to the Emerge, who feels they may have that, not to go in until they've been assessed. Because again, if this COVID-19 gets a foothold in our hospital, it, it has the potential to shut down emergency and urgent care. So, so this isn't, this isn't something that can be taken lightly, and I'm, I'm very glad that our government on both levels, and even ourselves, are trying to make sure that the message is clear and untainted. So, you know, we have a resource in Toronto, if a hospital closes, they can go to another one. We don't have that, other than Barry, which has taken a few patients. So we have, everyone has to do their part, from the social distancing, to making sure they don't, you know, show up with symptoms and, and bypass whatever safeguards are being put in place for everyone's safety.
Thank you. There's nothing more? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. The next item is the chart that was provided to us by the deputy chief, and I believe that there has been a few corrections maybe since you handed it out, there's some updates to it. Or not?
Perfect. Thank you, your worship. Yes, very recent updates, actually. So what this is, is a spreadsheet that was developed over the last few days, using the public websites, as well as social media, to determine our municipal partners, what they still have running and what they have closed. In addition to the original list, under tiny township, you can put, yes, they have closed town hall, yes, they have canceled council meetings. Sorry, pardon me? Is there a last one? Okay, so their last one will be March 30 for their council meeting, and then they will be canceling after that? Okay, so they've canceled March 30 council meeting and committee of adjustment for April the 6th, and that is the update. So what's, sorry, what's transpired in the last, over the weekend and just before the weekend, is a number of municipal facility closures, and what seems to be happening today is, is a number of municipalities looking at restricting access to their town hall from public.
Right, and this chart will be helpful as we move through our agenda. Right now, it's just for information. Can I have a mover and seconder? Councillor Foster and Belange? The council received the chart pertaining to other municipal actions for information. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Next, we have a motion with regard to tax payments and payment practices. Mr. CEO, did you wish to speak to this?
Thank you, worship. I'm going to turn it over to our deputy treasurer, tax collector. She's going to just speak a little bit about our tax due dates and mechanisms that are in place currently to deal with tax payments. Thank you.
Okay, and just so everybody is aware, the motion that will go along with this is that tax payment practices remain as they are currently, just so we know as we're listening to Cathy.
Thank you. So currently, residents can make their payments online through their banks. We have a service called Plastic, that they can make payments online using their credit cards. We are set up for pre-authorized payments, which are two different ways, one being on a monthly basis, and the other one is by installment due date. Those ones I am going to be processing once I leave the room. And so they're going through, no problem at all. We are still accepting payments at our front counter at this point in time, so anybody can come in and pay by credit card, or check, or cash. We prefer them not to come in, if they don't have to, if they can do one of the other ways, that would help a lot. Our interest doesn't get added to the tax accounts until the first day of the following month, so interest will not be added until April 1st at this point in time, so we still have time for those payments to come in.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions of Cathy? Can I have a mover and seconder for this motion? Councillor Watson, councillor Belange? And again, that was that the tax payment practices remain as they are currently. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, question? Councillor Foster?
I guess, I guess my concerns still have a large number. Thank you. Sorry, I was, my, just recap, I was concerned about, we have people who are part-time workers, people who are minimum wage earners, and so if we're looking at penalties, things like that, if their employment becomes challenged, for whatever reason, so I think of some of the small businesses, may be forced to close, we have to, in my opinion, we have to figure out a way to really minimize the penalties for this. We have people who use, you know, regular payments every two weeks with their, with their mortgage payment that gets paid, or every month by electronically, but we have people who have places that, if their income becomes challenged, if this goes on as it is, then we're going to have problems paying penalties, and back taxes can be made up over a period of time. But I'm more concerned about the penalties and, you know, it kind of compounding over time. So that's, I, I really would like us to address that. I know the penalty, the next penalty doesn't start till April 1st. I don't imagine there's a scenario where this is going to be cleared up by April 1st, so.
Yeah, and I don't know that that's a decision that we can make today. I think for today, taxes were due today, is that correct, Cathy? So there's still really that two-week window where no penalties are being enforced. Every day, we get new information, so we'll be looking to our treasury staff that, moving forward, they will bring forward recommendations for that. And I'm assuming if somebody was to come forward, like they do at any other time, consideration is given, and that would be considered by yourself or council at that time? Councillor Wells?
I was just going to say, before David got to say it, that I'm on the same view, that if this is going on as they're suggesting it's going to, for several months, and I'm hoping not, but that seems to be the latest best guess, is that I too would like to reconsider the, the penalty portion, and deferring the, the payment schedules to work with individuals. I think we need to be somewhat compassionate and empathetic to, and I realize it affects our ability to function, I know that, but at the same time, I think we need to be sympathetic and empathetic to people's individual circumstances, so when it comes to penalties, I think we, I would like to see us address the whole issue of penalty and payment, payment time requirements, so.
Yeah, and again, I don't know that that's something that we should be jumping to, to today. I think that we need to have more, like, information from staff on that. I think they're hearing what's being said here today, but to just automatically arbitrarily say that we're going to remove all penalties, I would be a little bit concerned. I think we need more information before we would do that. Councillor Belange?
Thank you, mayor. In watching the prime minister's speech to the nation, I, and I think there's other jurisdictions, I think the general feeling is that, that there would be no harm related to any kind of financial loss directly related to the virus. Not all of those decisions have been made, and I would agree, we have time to make those decisions, but I think, I think that's been the general tone that, that we're hearing there. They talked about job loss, and that it would be important to make money available to people on fairly quickly, either through unemployment or other, other ways, to ensure that they can continue to buy food and important things like that.
And I believe Denise will probably speak to that in her section of the agenda. Is there any other? Councillor Watson?
Thank you, worship. I agree with the comments being made, and one stark example right now is Blue Mountain closing, probably a month earlier, and it's a big employer in the area, and all those people are going to be without paychecks, I guess, going forward, so it's just, when the report comes back, I'd be happy to see that report. Thank you.
Okay. I will read it one more time, because it's been a little while. Moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Belange, that tax payment practices remain as they are currently. All those in favor? Most? Carried unanimously.
Your worship, just so it's clear from a staff perspective, in the interim, over the next, the next couple of weeks, we'll look at what members of council have discussed this evening, and we'll be speaking with our municipal counterparts as well, and bring information back to council for consideration.
Okay, that's perfect. I think there's a lot of moving parts right now, new information daily, and we need to take everything into consideration. Next is with regard to program refunds. The motion is that council authorize full refunds with regard to municipally canceled programs due to COVID-19, and this is dealing with our recreation programs, where people have signed up, be it for March break or other things, and we're just looking for support to give them those refunds. So I'll need a mover and a seconder? Councillor Foster and councillor Wells? Is there any discussion? Oh, councillor Kinney?
Thank, thank you, worship. I just, I saw that, and I just think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. 3.5 is the tracking of costs of what this is adding up to.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, this, this is just an information item that the town, the town has set up a mechanism to track costs associated with this virus. to track costs associated with this virus, so that if we're asked at some point, or for the information for council at the end of this, is that we can, we can clearly explain to council what the costs are from an organizational standpoint, whether it's been refunds, like we just discussed, or it's been costs that have been incurred to address anything in particular with respect to this virus. So I just wanted to make council aware that we've set up tracking mechanisms through treasury to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, and there's no motion for this, it was just for everybody's information. Is there any questions on that? Okay. Human resource, we do have a motion that council receives the human resources updates for information, and I will pass it over to Denise.
Thank you, your worship. I was very happy to hear about the Ontario government announcement today. We are eagerly waiting for this type of information. I've been in contact with a lot of different municipalities, and we're working together to try to share as much information as possible. Right now, we have, we're imposing the medical directives with staff. If you're, you've been out of the country, or you're exhibiting symptoms of the, the virus, to stay home and self-quarantine or self-isolation for 14 days. We've been looking at the different compensation methods right now. There's short-term disability, and there's, there are, the town's insurer is waiving the waiting period. At this time, we're going to have to potentially give employment insurance, our records of employment, so that staff can obtain employment insurance. We've had some casual and part-time staff that the services, for example, in recreation have been ceased just temporarily, so we're working with payroll to facilitate that as quickly as possible. And we're just sharing information with other municipalities to determine all sorts of different options. There's been a number of questions, fair enough, from the staff. We're looking at, you know, options of working from home, if that's feasible and reasonable. There's, a number of staff have new babies and, and, yes, vulnerable family members susceptible to this virus, so there's lots of questions on if they want to self-quarantine, and so we're, we're working through all of those dynamics, and we'll put some guidelines together. Other action items that I've been working on in follow-up to a recent management meeting, I've prepared pandemic planning policy for consideration. I'm in touch with our insurer to understand that with our short-term disability claims, they're looking at potentially streamlining, maybe not requiring medical notes, which would be a burden to our doctors and the hospitals. There's, we're also preparing a list of staff that are away, it's March break, so how to best deal with the staff upon their return. We have a self-administered employee assistance program. These types of situations can cause a great deal of stress on staff, so we're looking at just developing protocols so that they can contact. And fortunately, everybody's prepared to provide services, either through the phone or video conferencing. And lastly, there are, there's another, there's going to be a webinar tomorrow, a legal webinar, that we're going to obtain some additional information. And I guess my last point is, we're fortunate, we've had a considerable amount of recruitment at the beginning of the year, which is typical, we're kind of on the tail end, but my recommendation is to proceed and do either Skype or phone interviews, just to complete that process.
Okay, thank you. Mr. CEO?
Thank you. Denise gave a very thorough update there. I just wanted to supplement her presentation. As, as was alluded to earlier, people who are traveling outside of the country, upon their return, they are required to self-isolate for 14 days. And under our practice, they would fall under the short-term disability provisions that we have in place, so it's a short-term disability benefit. And under that benefit, they're entitled to 75% of their, of their wage. So, you know, if you look at an eight-hour day, they would be, they would, they would be, receive a benefit for six of those eight hours. So we're looking at means of topping some of that up in terms of giving them that full eight hours, but using their existing, existing entitlements. So whether they, their vacation entitlement, which they earn, or overtime, which they earn, that applying that, those two hours per day through the application of overtime or the application of vacation, so that they're whole. Some of our employees live paycheck to paycheck, and we don't want them presenting themselves at work if they're sick or whatnot, just because they need to make 100%. So we're looking at ways that we can introduce some flexibility at no cost to the organization to make it easy for our employees to do the 14 days when they have to self-isolate, or if they're not feeling well, to stay home, as has been encouraged by the health authorities. So I just wanted to share that with you, so you understand the implications of some of what's being discussed this afternoon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I'll look for a mover and seconder for this motion to receive. Counselor Belange, Counselor Kinney? And I will open it up for discussion. Counselor Watson?
Thank you, worship. Just to touch on the point that Denise made about not having to get a medical note to overburden our healthcare system now, that was mentioned, I think, in the premier forward's direction today, also that they're going to help people that, that need it, to make sure they don't lose any wages, but they also made a point that they do not need a medical note to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so again, it's moved by Counselor Belange, seconded by Counselor Kinney, that council received the human resources update for information. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. The next item is a discussion with regard, there's, there's a couple of parts to it. The first one is dealing with town hall. Right now, we have town hall, the fire department, and our public works offices open. This chart that was circulated previously is an indication of what other municipalities are doing. This is changing by the minute, and we, we have two options that we can go here. We can close town hall to the public, we can still have our staff here working, catching up on all kinds of things, they can still be answering phones and emails and servicing the public. Or we can, for the time being, leave it open and see where things go. I am going to weigh in on this one. I do feel that it's coming regardless, so to wait another eight hours, or two days, or whatever it might be, to close that, I think that by doing it now, like others have already done, it will give our staff a comfort level. Right now, there, there is fear within the organization and, in different departments, and dealing with the public, and, and sometimes we won't be able to avoid that, but I think in following suit with what some others are doing, I think it's in the best interest of our staff at this time. Again, they would still be required to come into work. You know, we, we've discussed working from home, but the reality is, if they can come to work and have everything at their fingertips, I think that will be more productive than trying to MacGyver things at home. So that's just my own opinion, but George, did you want to speak to this before I open it up for conversation?
Thank you, worship. Just with respect to the workplace that we have, we're very fortunate that we do have, the way our office is laid out, that there is space between individuals, and so we do have some of that self-distancing that it's in place, most of our operation is like that. So if we, if we keep the town hall and, and the fire hall and public works to just staff, the likelihood of staff getting infected by the, by the virus is, is reduced. We can control staff in that sense, in terms of, of who they're dealing with and whatnot. If the, the public do have access, then we're introducing an element that we're not, we're not able to control. The members of the public come to town hall, come to the fire hall, come to public works, they make a payment, they're asked inquiry, pick up a blue box, they're there, we don't know where they've been. So there is, there is some benefit in, in closing, closing our facilities at this particular point. Not all municipalities are there at this point, as, as our deputy fire chief alluded to with through the chart, but as we found with programming and, and whatnot last week, things moved quickly, and a number of municipalities did end up canceling programming, which we ended up doing it as well. So I think it's, it's a decision that council can make. I think you're, either one, I think you're in, in good stead of making. So we've given you that option, your worship, in terms of keeping it open or, or, or shutting it down. You, I think you know where it's going, so our next meeting as a group, members of council, is Thursday, so that, absent anything else, that would be the next opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I'm going to go to Craig, is our emergency management person?
Sure, thank you, your worship. I know this would be an incredibly difficult decision to make under normal circumstances. Government offices should be open to the public. However, what we are trying to do here is flatten the curve, and the opportunity to impact that flattening is very quickly moving past us. This is a very unique circumstance, that is hopefully something we will not have to deal with for a very long time, but our duty is to ensure continuity of government, and the only way that we can do that is to ensure the safety of our staff. So as your emergency management coordinator, you know, my recommendation would be to give serious consideration to restricting public access to the town hall, public works, and fire station, so that we can promote staff safety and operate as business as usual for as long as possible.
Yeah, recognizing that we are reviewing things daily, so if we get to a point where the offices can open, then we would certainly do that right away as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll open it up for conversation. Counselor Foster?
Thank you, your worship. And again, I, I concede it's a health and safety issue, not just for our staff, but should one of our staff, frontline staff be affected, and they're dealing with the public, it, it then does not help flatten the curve at all. I have, again, I, one of the challenges that I see, though, is, and it was mentioned by the deputy treasurer earlier, is there are still people who come into town hall to pay bills, to do whatever. And, and my, not everyone is comfortable with online banking or the other alternatives. I suppose they could use a Dropbox for paying their, you know, putting a check in. But I do think, I mean, if there was a way while we're doing that, that we could create some kind of booking system, so where someone could, you know, we, whether it's, we're going to be open one hour, or, you know, whatever, where they can book and have an appointment so that we can adjust our staffing to have a single staff member there to greet them and do whatever. It's a very fine line. At the end of the day, I'm going to, I'm going to go with health and safety for both staff and the general public overall, but I just thought, if we had some, because again, the, the tax bills are due today or tomorrow, I believe, so it's a very short window, and if people have arranged rides to come in and do that, if they don't, are uncomfortable on the internet, there has to be an alternative for people who, who have that, who have those challenges.
Yeah, and we did discuss that at some point, maybe, maybe in the leadership team meeting earlier, that there, there are certain services that might have to have those appointments made and things like that. Kathy, I'll look to you. If someone was to call into town hall and say, I need to make this payment, obviously you're closed, I don't have checks, I don't do online banking, whatever that might be, is that something that we would then look at as far as postponing a payment, or is that something that your staff would then make those, those one-off appointments for?
Thank you. I would think that we could make that arrangement, that we could accept a payment that way, or maybe ask them to put it in the front Dropbox, and then we could get a receipt to them through the mail, just so that they don't have to come into our building.
Right, so nobody's going to be stuck, because they can call town hall, they can still speak to someone, they can send an email and have it on file that they spoke, and that this was the, the decision made, and so they would still be looked after. Okay? Counselor Belange?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree that obviously the parabat priority is the health and safety of our staff, but I think there's also an element of us taking a leadership role in containment and setting the example for the community, so I am certainly supporting the mayor's position. I, I would go one step further, even though with staff, is self-assessment is great, but I understand that the, the temperature equipment, that you can just hold at someone's forehead and, and get a temperature measurement, I'm wondering if each location should have that, and people should check their temperature coming in, just to ensure that, you know, where no one's running a fever and coming to work would be a suggestion.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to look to Craig to just see, is that something that we can maybe just look into? You don't have to answer right now, but...
No, I can try, but I saw Counselor Foster had his hand up. Did you wish to...
Is it in relation to that? Okay.
Yes, I just, as much as I think that's a great idea, I think there are some privacy issues that an employer may or may not be able to cross, so, you know, I'd leave that to the experts to figure out.
And again, I think it's a good idea. I think we'll just leave it with Craig to figure out if that's appropriate or not.
Sure. There are screening tools in place that other municipalities are using, and it's more of a self-assessment, it's not where you walk in and your supervisor, you know, checks you out. It's more of a self-declaration to ensure that you're not coming into work sick.
Okay. Counselor Belange?
Yeah, that was, that was my point. I wasn't suggesting someone stand there and take their temperature, that they could take their own.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Counselor Wells?
Thank you, your worship. I'm supportive of the concept of closing town hall to the public, but with a couple of provisions. One, that it be a very extensive and repeated notice go onto our town website as to what the arrangements are, and I'll come back to that in a minute. That each of the facilities has very large signage placed at the, at the location to indicate that they still have access to town hall services by calling the following number, whatever that may be, to speak to an individual. Our, should be easy, because our, our switchboard will still, or our numbered switchboard will still be functional, so they need to speak to somebody in treasury, they can do it. So I, I support it, but with, only with that provision that ease of access be made, and that arrangements be made for people to come in if necessary. I think it's a small risk, personally, that if an individual appointment is made, the conversation can be held, keeping the social distancing between the individuals involved on a one appointment, on a one, on a one-on-one appointment basis, so just my, those provisions to advertise clearly what the arrangements are, and how people can get service from town hall during the, during the period.
And I think those are reasonable requests. Counselor Kinney, you are next.
Thank you, worship. I'm concerned about shutting down town hall, not so much our fire department or our works department. However, I'm going to also side with, I believe, that side in regards to what Counselor Foster had mentioned about our staff safety. I think that's priority. If you don't have a safe work environment, how can you be productive and do it? However, I, with what Counselor Wells had mentioned, I'm looking to Mike to try and do his utmost to message out to the community so that we don't create any more fear in this, that it's a approach that is calculated, and it's one to protect our residents and our staff. And as a result of that, I'm in favor of closing, but that's my thoughts, your worship.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bray?
Thank you, and I just think part of that messaging should be that we're limiting access, not closing. So we are still here, we are still performing town functions. I think it's really, really important that there is a Dropbox, there's good information on there of how to reach somebody, and maybe we have to look at our voicemail system so that that person doesn't have to go through three or four different prompts and numbers and to actually reach a person, because I think that's really frustrating if you do have an issue, and as much as we say, yeah, we're all here and we're all working, when we don't answer our phones, the other person doesn't realize that, so.
And on that note, I think it's important that staff answer their phone. Don't let it go to voicemail, because when people are calling, they're going to really want to be getting through. Counselor Watson, did you have your hand up? No? Counselor Belange?
Thank you, Mayor. A question for our director of planning, if I could, and he, he may be able to talk to the building department as well, like, certainly in our community, some of the work that would anticipate go on is construction work, it's outside, there's good social distancing, and when, there could be permits in process or consultations in process on larger developments, those types of things. Is, most of that, can we find alternative ways than face-to-face, like conferencing or phone calls? Can you see a case where you may have to look at an exception, or are we... Can you see a case where you may have to look at an exception, or are we okay?
Sorry, Doug, can you use the mic, please? I'm not sure if that one works, so you'll have to go over there.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. From the planning services' point of view, we are endeavoring to do our meetings through electronic means and computer interfacing as much as possible. And I cannot speak directly for the chief building official, but this afternoon, he did mention that construction is continuing and that there is a duty under the Building Code Act to do the assessments for safety. So the town staff will be going out into the field, but he did mention that there is a general slowdown in the industry caused by the effects of the COVID-19. So hopefully that answers the question.
Yeah, there was discussion at the leadership meeting earlier about that, and I think, I think all staff probably realize there will be those, those times where we have to make some concessions in this situation. So the deputy mayor Bray has moved the motion. Can I have a second, or Counselor Kinney? And it is that municipal offices be closed to the public commencing in March 17th, 2020 to reopen April 6, 2020. And just on that note, we would, of course, be following updates daily as we have been doing, and if it can open sooner, we will. And if it needs to be longer for some reason, it would have to come back to council. So, okay? No discussion? All those, oh, George, do you have something to say?
Sorry, worship, just, I think your last points are good points, and I think, subject to the mover and seconder agreeing, that might be a good effect, a good friendly amendment that, you know, that, that the situation be reassessed on a, on a regular basis and decisions made accordingly, something to that effect.
Okay. Did you type all that down? I'll look to Deputy Mayor Bray and Counselor Kinney if you're accepting of that. Okay. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. The next motion is dealing with council, coordinated committee and committee of the whole advisory committee meetings. The recommendation, based on discussions earlier today, is that effective immediately, all advisory committee meetings are canceled until further notice. So we would still carry on with our council meetings, our committee of the whole, our coordinated committee, it would just be our advisory committees that, in most cases, there's no urgency to them happening. Counselor Foster?
Yes, your worship, thank you. And I agree 100% on the advisory committees. I do have a concern with, with the council committee, the whole, et cetera, because I'm a member of those. We don't, at this point, we don't have a, an alternate system for, and this is, this is a unique situation we've had. This is nothing that's happened before. But again, I will, as people know, I have a compromised immune system. I came out of self-isolation to this meeting, but it does put myself and my family at risk doing these things. I want to be able to continue to not only do my stuff day-to-day, but be involved in the decision-making process. So I would like to see if we can, and I know it's on the agenda for Thursday, they talk about it, but I won't be here to vote on it. So I, unless you do that first thing, and then I can call in. But I mean, there has to be, if we are to continue, that has to be passed. It hasn't been passed yet, it hasn't really been officially reviewed, but it does put, some of us have, you know, if anyone has a compromised immune system, it puts us at risk doing these things. And it's not necessarily showing the best leadership if we don't have an alternative method. So that's all.
Yeah, and I believe, you know, Dina has brought that forward on Thursday. Did you wish to speak to it briefly now? I certainly can't say how a vote's going to go a few days from now, but, Dina?
Certainly, certainly, your worship. That is on the agenda for Thursday. There's a number of changes to the procedural bylaw to allow efficiency of meetings as well as to continue business and make things a little easier during this time. One of those things was to allow council member to participate electronically during emergency meetings and in the case of a pandemic. Council, as they did today, waived a procedural rule to, in order to carry on business today. And that is an option, should we wish to utilize that prior to the procedural bylaw rules being adopted. So in the instance of electronic participation, if we wanted to look at that in the interim prior to the bylaw being adopted, we would have to waive the procedural rule for electronic participation. And we would work with the councilor as best we could to make that happen.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you for that. And notwithstanding any changes to services at RVH, I probably won't be able to attend electronically anyway on Thursday, but I, it's absolutely critical because, you know, this is not something to be taken lightly by anybody.
Right. Okay, do we have a mover and seconder for this motion? Counselor Kinney, you, did I not read it? Oh, sorry. Effective immediately, all advisory committee meetings are canceled until further notice. Okay? Sorry, are you seconding? Okay. And is there any discussion? Counselor Watson?
Thank you, your worship. By saying, by saying that, we are continuing on with the other council meetings and that, is this the time to talk about public participation in those meetings, or is that coming up separately in the agenda here? Because we also have that to deal with also, if we're going to hold the meetings and if town hall is not having public access, how we're going to handle that part of it, if we're going to allow the public to attend these meetings?
Dina?
Certainly, your worship. We do have separation with the council chambers and the other half of town hall, we can keep that separation. We have put in some measures for our council meetings. As you can see today, we are distanced, and as well as the, the public area will be distanced as well. Hand sanitizer will be available, but we are doing some messaging and recommending that people take advantage of the technology that we've recently put in place. All of our committee and council meetings are now livestreamed and can be watched from the comfort of your home. They're timestamped for each individual item, so even if you're watching them later, you can zero in on the, on the items that are of interest to you. So we are encouraging the public to take advantage of those, that technology that we've put in place, but we can't close our public meetings entirely. We will be also encouraging any deputations that don't, aren't required immediately to maybe be put off until future meetings. We'll keep that social interaction at a minimum as best we can.
And so we're basically trying to respect our municipal act requirements of open meetings, but we may have to remove chairs in the audience to make sure that the distancing is met and things like that as well. Counselor Watson?
Thank you, worship, supplementary. Well, that's one thing I was going to say, we may want to put an identifying, something over every other chair if we're going to go that route. We've also been mandated by the province right now, I think, no gatherings of over 50 people.
It was 250 the other day, but not to say it hasn't changed.
Well, yeah, I've heard it's 50, and the President of the United States today came out and said no more than 10 in the U.S. So that is changing all the time, and we regularly can get over 50 people in here. So I think we really have to look at that because, again, it's, it's a health and safety thing. Every time you get a gathering of 50 people, those 50 people go somewhere, and if it's being spread, that's the problem with this whole thing. It's, it's being spread, people don't even have to have symptoms, and, but they'll get them in two or three days. So it's a very serious question that we need to ask ourselves here about what kind of participation. There's all sorts of alternate ways to watch a council meeting and get that, but I'm hearing 50, and I heard 10 today. That was a news conference with the president, no more than 10 people in a gathering area.
Dina?
Just one more thing I forgot to mention with regards to that is we are looking at the capacity of the council chambers and looking at how we can reduce that. Our CBO has mentioned that we would be able to reduce it by half and then keep that capacity and also the distancing. So we are looking into any options, and if anybody has any further ideas, we're certainly open to them.
And again, things are changing constantly. It was something that was discussed at the leadership, or leadership meeting that will, as things change, Craig, you'll be updating when we do have changes and things, and staff will make sure that we're following the rules while following proper practice that we're told as well. So, do I have to read this again? Because it's been a while? No, we're good? Okay. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. And just before we get into other matters, I do want to take this opportunity to thank staff. They've been putting a lot of effort into this and late-night meetings here at town hall. We were crammed in Mike's office last night, but it's been a lot of effort, it's been a team effort as well as to council for coming here today for a special council meeting, but also the public for keeping calm, being respectful, and, you know, we are in this together, and I have no doubt that it'll all come to an end in due time, but, you know, we need to stay calm with it and be respectful of the practices and policies that people, the government is suggesting, and the health unit, and again, as a team. So we're working together. And with that, other matters arising, Craig, did you have anything else that you wanted to add at this point?
I do not, your worship. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. CIO?
Excuse me, thank you, worship. Just to advise members of council that your department has a leadership team plus other members of staff are meeting on a regular basis, just to go over things, making sure that, that we have all the measures in place to be able to deal with this, anticipate for the future in terms of things that we may have to do. We're getting advice continuously from the Simcoe County District Health Unit. Craig is plugged in with his network, and so we're trying to make decisions based on the best advice that we can get. I'm plugged in with the area CAOs, so we meet via teleconference twice a week. So we have another meeting tomorrow at 10:00, and then we meet again on Friday. And we will endeavor to update members of council informally as we get information through email and then formally when we have this, these meetings. So we have another opportunity on Thursday to update members of council on a formal basis. And as been alluded to, things are changing very, very quickly, so as soon as we have new information, we'll certainly send that out to you. We're hoping for the best, but we're preparing for continuation of this current, current situation. And so part of what we're working on is a business continuity plan, so that if this does continue over an extended period of time, that we have measures in place that, that will allow the business of the organization to continue. Jeff in our bylaw department is leading that effort in terms of the, of the development of the business continuity plan. So it's, as the mayor indicated, it's truly a team effort. Everybody's doing their part to, to ensure that the town operations continue and that we continue to serve the public. So I also want to commend staff for coming together and dealing with this, dealing with this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other matters? Anybody? Counselor Bellage?
Yes, just, just to add to the comments and for, for the general public, as many of our staff here and that are not here, they, they had full-time jobs prior to the virus becoming a threat, and this has been a full-time job for many, including the mayor. I met with the mayor and CAO this morning about a couple of concerns I had, and the preparation's been very thorough. It had already been looked at and covered, so that was very positive and working with a lot of organizations. So I, I would hope that, that maybe we even move more quickly forward when I see some of the delays that happen south of the border and how fast the disease has expanded. I, I think we're definitely on the right path to keep it contained and ensure that our health workers aren't overwhelmed. So keep up the good work, and I'm available on very short notice anytime we need a quick meeting.
Thank you for that, Counselor Bellage. Counselor Foster?
Yes, your worship, and I wanted to, again, expand on, on the thanks because our, our staff, we're used to them doing a brilliant job, and, and they've stepped up as always, and that's excellent. But we also have to remind the public that part of this is, this flattening the curve is also protecting the emergency service workers from fire, paramedics, police, and most importantly, the nurses and doctors. If they get overwhelmed by this, it becomes a much bigger problem. So, you know, when we're giving out thanks, you have to thank those who are in the front line. They really are in the front line on this one. And I think it's, it's absolutely important that, you know, we, we do what we can. The other part, and it's been mentioned a few times, and I'll take exception to perhaps what Counselor Watson said, please don't take information from the President of the United States. But, but there are actual websites. So Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, the Province of Ontario Health, they give you the information. I happen, when we were chatting about this, I went on to social media and I saw a few things that said, I don't know if this is true, but if, if that's the case, don't post it. If you don't know it's true, don't speculate, don't pass rumors, and, and again, things like the shelves at Walmart are empty. That does nothing to help anybody. We've got a, we've got a foods, from the old banking world of mine, our, this is a disease that's caused a panic. It's not related on us running out of food and, and toilet paper. We haven't run out of toilet paper in Canada. So it's important that people stick to the facts and don't do anything to spread rumors and worry, we should be worried, but don't spread it on speculation. Spread facts. In fact, don't spread facts, just go to the source to get the facts. Don't speculate. It doesn't help anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, Mike has the town's website loaded with information and links and all of that, and that is a reliable source. It's taking you right to the proper sites to get information. So, the confirmatory bylaw, can I have a mover and seconder? Oh, George, got to wave at me.
Sorry, worship, I was just, just trying to catch your attention there, just some conversations you had this morning with different members of the community. Were you going to share those with members of council or just at another, another point?
Sure. I did have a discussion with regard to the, with a representative from the food bank who said that at this point, you know, they still have food on their shelves and things, but, you know, the time might come that they, you know, more people might be using the food bank and things like that. So we don't want to forget about them as well, but I'm, I'm told that at this point they are, they're doing okay. Thank you for that reminder. Now, can I have a mover and seconder for the confirmatory bylaw? Deputy Mayor Bray and Counselor Bellage. Be it resolved that a bylaw to confirm the, oh, no, skipped a part. 2020-22, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation of the town of Wasaga Beach at its special meeting held Monday, March 16th, 2020, resolve that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation of the town of Wasaga Beach at its special meeting held March 16th, 2020, be received and be deemed to be read a first, second, and third time, passed in number 2020-22. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone.